Emperor, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One, two, three. Student Advisory Committee update. Who's first?
It's me.
It's me.
Okay. Hi, my name is Rachel Schooler and I am a senior SAC representative. I wanted to take today to speak about the benefit that students can gain from class field trips. So on Friday, January 27th, I had the opportunity to go on a field trip with the other students who are currently enrolled in Latin IV, AP Latin, or who took AP Latin last year. The Latin teacher, Mr. Della Sola, set up the chance for us to look at medieval manuscripts and participate in a workshop with workers who run the Special Collections Library, Houghton, at Harvard. We then had lunch with some of the professors who work in the Humanities Department at Harvard, and we were able to ask questions and talk about our experience with the manuscripts. In these pictures on the screen, you can see the many different manuscripts we were able to look at, and then the translation that we did from one of the manuscripts. So that's what those pictures are. Having the opportunity to see firsthand what the writing that I spent so much time reading last year looked like made me feel so much closer to the learning material, and it was such a unique experience. AP student Samantha Miller says, "This trip truly felt like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity," and it has made her appreciate AP Latin so much more because she was able to see its impact and existence in such a hands-on way. When learning about this topic, especially, or when learning about a topic, especially one from 29 B.C., it can be really hard for students to connect with the work they're doing. And this trip was a fantastic way to bring the subject matter to life and show students what they, why what they are learning is so cool and so important. After having such an incredible learning experience on this trip, I started to think about other academic trips that I've taken, but I could only come up with some from elementary and middle school. I know that a lot of this has to do with my high school career being taken over by coronavirus, but now that we seem to be back in the swing of things, I wanted to encourage these trips as much as I can. There is something so engaging about being able to see what you are learning in school and in real-life scenarios, in school outside and in real-life scenarios. I feel as though other students should have this opportunity, and trips like this should be much more widespread. I have talked briefly with my English teacher about going to see a play about a book that we're going to read in class, and I think this would really help the students get a grasp on the reading and connect the book outside. People learn in such different ways, and I would love to see these hands-on experiences offered, hands-on experiences offered much more, because I truly believe so many students could benefit from them. Thank you, have a great night, and Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for the committee? Thank you very much.
I'm going to give her a comment. Yeah, I'm going to get, because I have to.
I didn't hear any, see any hands.
I'm sorry.
Telepathy?
I apologize. Mayor Vigen, I'm just a little tired. I'm trying to pull it together here. So, Rachel, I think I completely agree with you. I kind of go back to think about all of the field trips that you got to do in elementary school, and a lot of hands-on, like how, how many times, like going to Sturbridge Val, Sturbridge Village, uh, sorry, but Sturbridge Village and that kind of stuff. It really does make an impact on you, so I do think that it would be really beneficial, whether it would be middle school, high school, those opportunities are things that really do make an impact, so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
Good evening. Today, I'm here to talk to you about MYCAP, my, or My Career and Academic Plan. MYCAP is an initiative that was introduced by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to help students identify what they are interested in pursuing after high school and what to do now to set themselves up successfully for that interest. MYCAP is built off of three basic principles: awareness, exploration, and immersion. To start out with awareness, ninth and 10th graders took a survey for MYCAP with broader questions like who your guidance counselor is and how many credits you need to graduate, and other questions to see if students have narrowed down their interests on a career yet. This survey helps students to start thinking about their future in a way they might not have before. This also helps Mrs. Chenier, our career specialist, and Mrs. De Horatius, who runs the early college high school, see what students know or still need to know. From there, students will move on to exploration. Using a service called Naviance, students will be able to learn more about different steps towards their success they might not have known on the survey they filled out, and it also has many exploration activities for students to find a career that interests them and the path they can take to get there. This can help students learn more about their strengths and make goals for something they want to do beyond high school. Lastly, students will progress to the step of immersion. Once they have decided on a career path that they have interest in, they can start building experience and gaining information in that field. Naviance and the many opportunities provided by Mrs. Chenier gives students a chance to network with professionals in a given field and see if that career is a good fit for them firsthand. MHS has many wonderful opportunities to try a job, reflect on whether it is right for you, and either continue working and building knowledge, or to try something else if it isn't a good fit for you. But MYCAP doesn't only use immersion for career development, it also helps prepare you with academic planning. Based on the given field, this initiative can help students plan for their four years at MHS that will help them be ready for college or a trade after high school. It can help you know what level class or specific subjects can be beneficial for a student so they can perform well in these four years to be successful in their aspirations. Ultimately, Mrs. Chenier and De Horatius understand that college is a large investment, so MYCAP is a service that helps students make a better, well-informed choice for their future. It will help many students find what they are passionate about and help them pursue it. And while this program is just starting out, I can't wait to see the ways it'll help my peers and I.
Thank you. Questions for the committee, Ms. Bowden-Hendrick.
So, like, I understand that it's just, it's just coming online, but is this something that all, like freshmen are going to be introduced? How will it get ruled out, do you know?
I'm not exactly sure, like, what it will look like year to year, but I know that this January 9th and 10th graders took the survey so that we can start it right at the beginning of their high school experience.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't know about that.
Hello, everybody. My name is Atul Madore, and I'm the freshman SAC representative. This evening, I would like to share with you all all about the Robotics Club. Unlike other clubs, the Robotics Club is a club where you can not only have fun and learn, but also compete. In robotics, we participate in VRC, or VEX Robotics Competition, where every year we build a new robot to compete in the new game. The season ends with Worlds in April, and at the end of Worlds, they unveil the new game for the next season. In this year's game, the main focus is discs, and you have to shoot these discs into a basket. You can also spin a roller to your team's color, and at the end of the game, you have to make your robot as big as possible. Based off how many towels you touch on the ground, you will get your recording points. Personally, I love this year's game because of its fast-paced games and its complexity. At MHS, we have four teams, three of which have competed, and one is new and learning all about robotics. We meet every Tuesday and Thursday after school to work on our robots. We also have three students that come from AMSA. They used to be in the program in middle school, but since AMSA does not have a robotics program, they're allowed to participate in hours. One of the teams this year has qualified for the U.S. Open and will be going to Iowa later this season. Also, one team of seniors, one team is completely made of seniors, which means at the end of the year, a lot of the students will be leaving. So looking forward in the future, I think one thing we need to focus on is getting more interest in robotics. For some reason, in the middle school, there's so much interest to the point where there's a waiting list, but it drastically, it drastically reduces when it comes to high school. One idea was to run some fun activities with students at the beginning of the year to get people to sign up, but we're still looking for new ways. One thing that amazes me is how much robotics has taught me. Not only have I learned how to build robots, but also team coordination and time management. Robotics competitions are one of the most stressful experiences I've ever had, but it's really fun. It has also taught me that I love engineering, and I want to be an engineer when I'm older. Over the four years I've been in robotics, I've learned so much, and I'm so grateful for this opportunity. I'm also so thankful for our advisors, Ms. Mahoney, Mr. Gay, and Mr. Latham, for all their support. I would also like to generate more interest for the club, and I would love to hear any ideas or feedback you may have. Thank you all, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Questions for the committee, Ms. Tennessee.
Definitely. So, I'm just curious, because you said meeting on Tuesdays and Thursdays after school, do you think that possibly it's because it may conflict with other things going on, and so some kids then are having to make a choice between robotics and something else, as opposed to trying to figure out how to do both activities or multiple activities?
Yeah, that's very true. I think that's a great idea, and we can definitely look into.
I'm just thinking, like, if you can look at different timeframes, it may encourage other people to be able to do it, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
Other ways.
Thank you, yeah.
Ms. Bowden-Hendrick.
So I watched the part of the competition that was on Instagram.
Oh, really? Oh, that was, yeah, middle school.
Yeah, Jill had taped it, or somebody taped it and put it up there. I, I think if you show something like that to every single student.
Yeah.
You'll get a boatload more, because it looks so fun.
Yeah.
And I have recently tuned in and learned about that, that bot show, that TV show.
BattleBots?
When they fight with each other.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Like, I'm so bummed out that I didn't get to do robotics when I was growing up, because it seems really fun.
Yes, it is.
And I, I can see your passion and your enthusiasm for it, so I think just, you should just bring your robot to school one day.
Yeah.
And just have it go around to class to class in the hallways, and that'll get, like, a whole lot of buzz, because I think when people see.
Yeah.
I think a lot of times people think maybe it's too hard, or I'm not smart enough, or it's boring, but once they see it and see how fun it is.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people would, would do it.
That's a great idea, thank you.
You just reminded me, the other thing is, is like, sometimes, I forget what it's called, but like, I don't know, in the spring, I feel like some of the kids from high school go back to the middle school to try and have introductions of different activities and athletics and stuff like that.
Yep.
So you definitely should make sure that there's a way that you have an opportunity with some of your friends to go to the middle school to, like, sell them on this opportunity, and maybe take feedback from the kids to understand when do they have availability and when, when are they finding any conflicts, so that way you guys can find a good way of getting more people there.
Yeah, that's a great idea, thank you.
And I, just along that.
No problem.
Do you ever talk to kids that did it in middle school but are not doing it in the high school, to ask them why they're not doing it?
I think the main thing is they moved to different schools, so a lot of the students go to Asabet or AMSA, yeah, because of just other reasons, I guess, so, that's, I guess that's one reason why a lot of, like, the eighth graders aren't really coming into the high school.
Got it.
So.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Atul.
I would just like to quickly add that I wanted to note that Risha Kandaria isn't here today because she's in Washington, DC, representing our school in Special Olympics at a conference, right? So, yeah, she's advocating, so, yeah, that's why she wasn't here, and just wanted to bring a spotlight to that.
Awesome. Can't wait to hear about it afterwards. It's great, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. District Improvement Planning. On January 31st, the district-wide leadership team met to update the current strategies for improvement. Each strategy group also shared out their priority focus with the whole group and identified future resources that will be needed to support their goals. It is my intent to continue to update the strategies for improvement and to identify specific goals that will be embedded annually in a district improvement plan. The district improvement plan will allow school councils to align their school improvement plans to the district goals. The district improvement plan will identify action steps, persons responsible for each action, resources, funding needed, which will help drive our budget for future years, timelines, and how progress will be evaluated. Any questions on that?
Any questions?
All right, thank you. Mid-cycle goals update. Attached to this report is a mid-cycle update to my goals. As I reflected on the goals I have set for this year, both the goals I have submitted to the committee, as well as my personal goals, I recognized I needed to add an additional action to engage parents. On March 7th and May 30th, I will be inviting parents to join me and members of my leadership team for open discussions on the Marlboro Public Schools. We have scheduled a morning coffee and an afternoon tea on these dates. More information will be sent to all families, and translators will be available for these events. The FY24 Budget. Today, we are providing you with the FY24 Budget Book, or Mr. Diaz is. We look forward to discussing this at the budget hearing scheduled at 6:00 PM on March 1st, 2023. The complete budget will be posted tomorrow morning to the Marlboro Public Schools website. If you have any questions, please reach out to Mr. Diaz before March 1st. And finally, I was holding a spot in my report for Whitcomb School interim principal update. Principal House has extended her leave to the end of April, and I think we're all aware that Mr. LaCina is waiting for a surgery to occur. After February vacation, Whitcomb School Assistant Principal Christine Dolan will begin to transition to interim principal. If possible, if his schedule, if his surgery is not scheduled immediately, Rick LaCina will remain at Whitcomb School during a two-week transition period to help with the transition. Supervisor of Health and Wellness Todd Turcott will also move full-time to Whitcomb School to support the Whitcomb School leadership team. He had previously served as interim assistant principal in that building, so he's familiar with many of the routines. Finally, also, late this afternoon, I'm also pleased to announce that Richard School interim principal Lisa Richards will continue on as principal of Richard School in the fall. So tomorrow was the date in which we, by contract, were going to have that discussion, and we did have that discussion, and we will begin negotiations for a new contract. Any questions?
Questions from the committee. Dr. Skazza.
Thank you, Mayor Vigen. I have a brief update on a couple of topics here. The first is the literacy programming in Marlboro Public. At our last early release day on February 8th, elementary educators further planned for our transition to the Into Reading Program for ELA in grades K through 5. The session started with independent exploration of Teacher's Corner, that is a part of the online platform entitled Ed that Houghton Mifflin has put together. It offers specific training with the resource, so there are modules and screencastifies and, and different training options that the teachers can access. During the remaining time of that session, educator teams worked together with the platform and planned for the first unit next fall. So they're getting a jump on things, and from what I understand, pleased with the opportunity to, to prepare for the transition to this resource. As a reminder, the Into Reading Resource is the revamped Houghton Mifflin Hardcore, or otherwise known as HMH, literacy program that we are shifting to from the current Journeys product that has been discontinued. We continue to pilot the Into Literature and Amplify programs in grades K through 8, or sorry, 6 through 8. Our next stop, step with this process is to gather some student feedback. That was an idea that we came up with recently. We think that we need to hear some student voice when making a decision on these programs. So Dr. Reyes, supervisor of Humanities, and Mrs. Ryan, Whitcomb Intervention Coordinator and Reading Specialist, are planning to work with interim principal LaCina and the Whitcomb Student Council to develop a survey to gather students' perspectives. We'll put that together with the teacher feedback and other sources of data from the pilots and make an informed decision to present to Superintendent Murphy. On that note, we continue to pilot ELA programs, Into Literature, and Bedford-Freeman and Worth in grades 9 through 10. Dr. Reyes, Dr. Riley, and I will be reviewing the feedback with the pilot teachers. We also wanted to get some feedback from students and the student council at the high school level, too, and then we'll be presenting a recommendation to Superintendent Murphy later this spring.
Tennessee.
Thank you. So, thank you for the updates about the literacy programs. Specifically, I appreciate the clarity about the literacy programs for elementary, since obviously we're transitioning to a new program. It's not that we're dropping a program and not trying to replace it, it's that specifically Journeys is no longer available, so we're making that transition. So I think that's really great that you have that update around it. I really love the ideas that you've mentioned about trying to get the student feedback and reaching out to the school councils to try to get some idea, there are student councils. I guess my only other thing I would, I would love to hear, and I know we've talked about this before, is trying to actually get to some of the student body that doesn't always step up front, right? Because the kids that are on student council, while I appreciate and I value those opinions, I think it's, it really needs to be pushed out to some of the students that don't always get that voice, right?
I'm glad you bring that up, because it gives me an opportunity to clarify. The idea was for the student council to help create the survey.
Okay, yeah.
That would go to the entire student body, anyone who participated in either one of the programs.
Yeah, which would be great. I just, you know, we've had this discussion, is that we want to make sure that we're really capturing the whole perspective, and sometimes the students that don't always step up need to make sure that we have their voices included, too, so that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Tennessee.
No problem, thank you.
Can I, I know we're doing a new writing program, is that embedded in this? So it's a whole package?
It is, it's a whole package. Yep, it's a, it's a whole package, so the pilot includes the writing portion of the package.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Oh, one more thing, Mayor Vigen, I'm sorry.
Also about MCAS.
Quick one on MCAS. We did have a planning meeting recently to discuss the testing window and the infrastructure test to prepare for testing the system to see if it can handle all of the students testing on the same day. We have scheduled that infrastructure test for April 4th, and the first day of MCAS testing right now for the elementary schools, I have grades 3 through 8, but we have confirmed in a draft calendar that is definitely for grades 3 through 5 is scheduled for Monday, April 11th. The draft elementary MCAS calendar is in your packet tonight.
Ms. Bowden-Hendrick.
Thank you. I just have another MCAS question, but it's probably the older kids. Science, this year, we don't do science. We're still doing it just by coursework, and then next year kicks in again? Or for the graduation requirement?
For the graduation requirement, no, it is not required, but students are taking by course. They're, they took biology last year, I think they're taking physics this year.
Right.
Yes. So ninth, ninth graders will be taking it this year in science as well, for physics.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Minutes of January 26th.
Motion to approve.
Motion, ma'am, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose, carries. Public participation? Any public participation? Public participation? Seeing none. MHS Robotics Overnight Field Trip.
Mrs. Mahoney is going to join us?
Yes, I'm Joanne Mahoney. I am presently the robotics advisor for the middle school. Atul, by the way, is the one that's on the team that Rachel is not here, but we are going on a field trip. We're going, we're going to Iowa. And you should have the itinerary that the high school advisor, Christian Latham, has passed out to you. Yeah, we just needed approval for that high school team, so Atul from the high school, myself, and Mr. Latham, Atul's mother is coming as well, are the ones from the high school that we are requesting the funds for. Okay.
Contain a motion.
Motion to approve the trip.
Motion, ma'am, seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose, carries.
Thank you.
Come home with a trophy.
Have fun.
Yes, have fun.
First, come home with a trophy, then have fun.
Lots of video, always.
Another field trip, going to New York City.
To New York City. Mr. Walden.
Hello, Madam Superintendent, Mayor Vigen, School Committee. I've met most of you, I'm the new choral director at Marlboro High School, my name is Caleb, Mr. Walden, and I have been working with the after-school acapella group Voices Required for the past seven years now, I'm going on seven years, and we've always wanted to go on a trip outside of the state, take the students somewhere else to perform, so we chose New York City. We have a professional group who is going to be hosting a concert, and hopefully Voices Required will open for them, and I brought Bethany Gibson here with me. I don't know if you want to say something about the group and what it means to you? If you're not comfortable?
Okay. Hello, I'm Bethany Gibson, I'm a senior at Marlboro High School. I've been in Voices Required since my freshman year, so this is my fourth and final year. VRC is my second family. I honestly can't even explain how much this group means, this group means to me, because, yeah, I think of it as my second family. Everyone is so close together by, because we do music, we do what we love, and that's the thing that brings us together, and we just did Valentine's Day serenades today, and the school loved it, everyone loved it, and it's what we get to do. We get to show what we love doing, and hopefully that is what we'll get to do, so.
I believe you have the itinerary, I did send it, so it's pretty, pretty straightforward. Couple fun things, concert, and then come home, all within a weekend.
And get to see Dear Evan Hansen.
Well, actually, we couldn't get tickets to that, so we're on hold for what I think is an even better musical opportunity for the students, so we'll see.
Okay.
But it's a secret, or?
Six, the musical.
Six! Oh!
It's a better opportunity.
I saw it, I saw it when it was at ART.
It was really good.
It's amazing, amazing, yes.
And no trophy?
No trophy.
No trophy, not trophy-worthy.
Ms. Tennessee.
So, I'm so excited for you guys to have this opportunity, and yeah, you know, Voices Required is kind of close to my heart. I, I appreciate very much so what Bethany is talking about, and I'm sure it was really tough during COVID when you couldn't necessarily perform so much. I, I see that you guys have done a lot of fundraising, and I'm going to give you huge kudos for that. Are there other ways, like other fundraising opportunities coming up that?
We, we've been promised the other funds by parents, but we're not going to take that. We, there's no question we'll get the funds before the trip date.
Yeah.
We have, I think, three or four, five things lined up right now.
You guys have been working.
Including a concert on April 13th, if you all want to come.
You guys have been working really hard on, on trying to get the word out for fundraising events, and kudos to you, because that's no small task, so. And thank you for continuing to look for opportunities for the kids to kind of get out there and showcase. I mean, there are a lot of great events, obviously, here in New England for acapella, but having that experience, and I think to the point that Rachel was talking about before, you know, like the field trips, it really, it really helps to kind of keep things going so that they can participate, not just in high school, but find ways of continuing, which I think Bethany may be continuing in music, but, you know, and I think when we talked about with Jackson, playing the, Jackson Clements playing the tuba, you know, you can find other opportunities, even if it's not your specific path, that you're only going to be music, you can have it as part of your element, and thanks for keeping that alive here in Marlboro.
Absolutely.
Ms. Bowden-Hendrick.
Where, what are the details for April 13th?
Oh, it's 7:00 PM at Whitcomb. We will be performing, a professional group is going to come be the headliner, and Voices Required is going to. to come be the headliner, and Voices Required is going to open. And the middle school chorus is going to be onstage with the group singing. So we're really excited. They're going to do some daytime workshops that day, too, as well, so.
That's great. And I've gotten to hear Bethany. She actually came and did the National Anthem for us at our MEF Road Race.
Yep.
So.
You're going to be at Gillette doing the Revolution, New England Revolution, so.
Well, that's a little bigger than the MEF Road Race. Wow, that's great. When is that?
March 29th.
Amazing. Good to tune in.
Motion to approve the trip.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose, carries.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, have a great time.
Excepted to donations and gifts, Marlboro Junior Women's Club, MPS Family, $250.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor?
There's discussion. Are you not voting?
Oh, okay. All those in favor, this Ryan is abstaining from the vote.
So is Hennessy.
And Mrs. Hennessy.
Mrs. Hennessy is abstaining from the vote. All those in favor, pose, carries. Hannaford Helps Schools, Kane Elementary School, $201.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose, carries. Staples Marlboro MPS, $530.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor, pose, carries. And Carl Wolf, the Mass, MHS, $2,500.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, pose, carries. Reports of subcommittees. Ms. Hennessy.
Thank you. So we did have a policy subcommittee meeting two weeks ago now, week and a half, two weeks ago. And we do have a policy that will be moving forward. Unfortunately, I have to say, I did not get a chance to get it forward to Patty prior, with enough lead time. So I was not going to just try and jam it on. So we will have that coming up. There was some good discussion with some parents that came forward, wanted to present some information. So I'm sure that discussion will continue. And we'll be having another policy meeting coming up. We have not set a new date. So I will let you all know about that. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other subcommittees? Seeing none. Members forum. Hennessy.
Sorry, thank you. So just a couple of quick MIAA things, because I've been a part of a number of quick discussions. First would be, there were some changes relative to the MIAC, which is the group that I got nominated to be a part of, which does the waiver approvals and has school committee representation as well as superintendents and such. It was a group that was established, I guess, kind of like a checks and balance system, I guess I would say, for the MIAA. And so they went through a process where we were part of a number of different calls. I have been on the phone with Glenn Kuchar to make sure that from higher level, we were kind of staying on track with MAS's expectations and needs. And bottom line is, the way that the waivers have been happening, it's been a very good, solid process of making sure that the board does their initial approval, and then it kind of comes over to the ERB. We review things and then actually can have a little bit of more open discussion if there are specialty needs. It's worked out very well. It seemed to put everybody on a better, I don't know, a better track, more transparent. They did ask for a change, and I say they, the MIAA Executive Board, where there had been a stopgap that for rule changes, it was having to go back to the MIAC. And they almost had like the final word of approval over all of the rules, which honestly seemed a little silly when you have all of the MIAA committees all individually voting on all of these rules. And then it was almost like the MIAC was taking over the ruling. So it was really good, healthy discussion. And it has now been approved that no, it will lie within the MIAA Board. They have upped the members of having the superintendent, so MAS and MAS will have additional representation placed on to the Board of Directors to make sure that there is enough voice to represent from those two areas. So I wanted to let you know. And I would say, I think I was getting some tap of maybe heading in that direction. So not there, but it was interesting. The other group that I'm a part of, which is sports medicine, we just had a conversation yesterday, and it was mostly around athletic trainers. And we are very fortunate within our district, obviously, because of having, I think, great advocacy of understanding the needs and the role of having an athletic trainer and actually how it helps us from a liability standpoint. But not all school districts are frankly really lucky to have that kind of funding. So it sounds like Richard Pearson, who is a part of MIAA but also sits on, where is he, Foxborough School Committee, he and I, I think, are going to be partnering up and at the MAS C Fall State Conference, I believe we're going to work with some of the Athletic Training Group to put up a presentation to really better understand how school districts can really benefit from having the athletic trainers there. Because there's been a lot of rule changes where there's been more requirements of athletic trainers to attend certain sporting events, but not all. And it's starting to put everybody in a pinch. But as we said, you can't have the funding in place to properly hire somebody at that level if there's not the information and understanding across the board. So just, you know, put that on your radar. And I would say if you guys have some perspective of things that you feel like other school committee members from other districts could really benefit hearing, I'd appreciate any feedback. Okay? So that would be it.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, so what you're saying is not all school districts have athletic trainers?
No, they don't.
And so if there's an injury on the field, what is the school, I mean, nurses have to be on the field? Or they have no medically trained?
Many times they don't. And that's what we've been discussing. There's actually is, there's their concerns. And it's a concern because it can be a liability. We actually had one of the athletic directors who was on the call was speaking how there was a child who had a seizure in front of a bunch of coaches. And the coaches did not have the training specifically in that realm. That's not their thing. And so, you know, it just puts everybody in a very awkward position because some people are going to have the training. And that's why there is a benefit of having an athletic trainer there. There are certain sports, though, that have requirements, like football, for instance, or ice hockey, for instance, that have requirements of having athletic trainers there. There are discussions across the state of wanting to have more athletic trainers at events. But we, and I say we, like greater we, have had concerns because to put that burden on a district if there's not the pre-planning is hard. And I feel like how can we necessarily put a rule in place if we haven't had a bigger discussion about the funding element? So it's just chicken or egg. And, you know, I say to our district, I'm grateful that we have approached it by making sure that that's something that is funded here in Marlboro. But not all districts, and especially out in the western part of the state, they don't, they definitely don't. And it's, it is problematic because sometimes there are EMTs that are called upon to have to come to games. But they aren't well-versed on what to do specifically in some of the school event training. So, anyway, hope that answers.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Any other members?
I have reviewed the warrant and signed it.
Thank you. Any other members? Seeing none.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, pose, carries. Thank you very much.